Okay, before you have two sets of minutes, October 22nd and a special call meeting on October 30th, I'll entertain a motion for approval individually or?
Together.
Together, oh, we're stepping up here now. Okay, I have a motion for approval of both minutes. Let's take it. Any discussion on these minutes? That being said, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion. Okay, Parker reports. Does any of our, uh, Parkers want to get up and say anything?
I got the findings in front of me. General fund looks pretty good. Uh, precautionary, we did budget a deficit of about fifty thousand dollars a month for the next two months, so, uh, but right now it does look like we might end up, if I dare say, in the black, so.
You may dare say.
Well, I attribute that to the employees, city employees, for sure, so, but, uh, the year's not over yet.
You find that though?
Pardon?
You attribute that to the employees?
Well, you know, when we did the budget to begin with, we were pretty conservative on our estimates and actually our expenditures were real close, but they've actually during the year watched those expenditures even closer, but I'm gonna say on the revenue side, we, we may have projected a little light, or we've grown at about a three point five percent increase in the city. Uh, our tax base is up, we are, actually the property taxes are up, there's some line items within that revenue source that, uh, we may have underestimated, but we estimate as best we can. Uh, but I wanna, I wanna leave most of it to the expense part of it that they've watched real close this year. They don't buy into it.
Well, that's evident from the, uh, that's just numbers, financials, but it's good that we say that publicly so that the citizens of the community know that there might be lost that and look after them. That's why I asked you that.
Thank you. Anybody got anything else? Part of the applause. Okay, we'll move in committees, or not committees, but, uh, what's come out of committees. Mitch, I guess, and if you wanna talk about the budget, we only have one more meeting on, we'll point out, unless you're gonna call special meetings or something, but, uh...
Well, I've spoken to different members of the, of the finance committee and we'd like to table the budget resolution until December. Um, we still have a few things, I don't see any asking for any changes or anything, but there's still a few questions that some of them have. So, we would like to table that until the next meeting with approval of the council.
Make a motion. What do you show? I have a motion to table, anybody?
Sir.
Motion. And a second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion carried.
Just a reminder, I will not be here for the next council meeting, so if you have questions of me, you need to see me before.
What's your most taken notice tonight?
The thing for...
I would dovetail that, I spent an hour with him today, Mitch and I, the mayor, it's for the rest of the members on the committee, it's worth your time to sit down with them, take a look at the budget from top to bottom. I think you, I think you have your question.
Were you discussing the 2016 budget?
Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't notified.
It was not. It was a meeting between Luke Feigert and I. It was not a committee meeting. I'm encouraging you to...
Mitch was there in that...
I called Mitch because he's the chairman of the committee.
Yes.
It was not, again, it was not a meeting in regards to the committee. I had questions for Luke and for the mayor. As an individual member of the committee, I need to have some answers, ma'am.
Okay, I can understand that, but I just knew I hadn't been notified.
No, it was, because it was not a called meeting.
Essentially, the only reason I was there is to provide any additional assistance based on my conversation with Luke and the mayor. So, for example, you and I are gonna discuss something at some point, you go sit down and we'll go through the same exercise.
They're all welcome to do that.
Yeah, anyone's welcome to do that.
It just was one of those things where I wanted to sit down and visit with Luke, made the offer, so that's how we got this.
You have anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move down to public safety. Ms. Gregor, I think you have...
We have Erin here to discuss the safety side.
Thank you all for allowing me to come back to sit down. Everybody has some issues or not? Pass them around. Um, for committee meeting, y'all asked for a couple changes to the proposed sign. Um, I went ahead and made those changes, some of those, Mary Jean. Police chief was also, said it looks good to him. Mayor also asked, I'll take a couple, someone else asked if South or the Down Street or the Weir, if we assign them there. I think that's open, as far as if, as long as I can get some funds available, and if we find a spot where it be necessary, I have no objection to that, so, as that comes into question, we can always, I'd be happy to find the funds and make those available if needed.
Uh, actually, this was brought up at the park's rec meeting and they proved it off, so, but I think it'd be up to council, just up and down vote, your support. When are you planning on actually doing this?
Uh, I need to, once we get the approval here, um, I will then start, continue petition to get the funds to pay for the signs. Um, our program, we'd have to actually get approval from the, uh, from the city or county where it's at. Uh, we have to get that permission first before we can actually petition for the funds from state level or community. Uh, so, I'd love to, before, I'd love to have everything before the end of the year. I don't foresee that happening, perhaps, uh, in January.
Okay, maybe I should've asked you before then. Does this have to be in just a minute, or does it need to be in a resolution or anything like that?
Minutes are sufficient.
Minutes are sufficient, okay.
All right, and what size of the sign again? The dependent upon where it's at, we can go eighteen by twenty-four or smaller. Uh, I don't think we need to go as necessarily as that would be, but, uh, we'll size accordingly depending upon the area, and I think we'll get together with parks and...
Are you gonna be meeting with to decide where the signs are placed?
Parks, uh, parks, yeah. They're gonna have a better idea as far as, you know, where people are potentially getting in the water, especially where balls are potentially rolling into the water, um, and we'll get together with them as far as placement. Uh, they'll tell us where to place the signs and I'll get together and then install.
And for clarification, the, the previous, uh, handout had a life ring attached to it. I assume that's still planned?
Yeah, yeah, in the verge down there, um, and I, like, uh, Mayor mentioned, actually in the article that we, uh, incrementally we put a life ring and rescue poles on there. I'd like to definitely in the area where the soccer balls are rolling into the river, I'd like to definitely in that area make sure that those poles are readily available. Uh, kids are always trying to get the ball out of the river, uh, and normally it shouldn't be an issue, but at least that'll give them something to use. Uh, I understand there's also gonna be the potential of vandalism, as with anything, uh, so we'll continue, continue to try to keep something in place there.
Any other questions for it?
I'll make a motion that we allow the signs to go up along Cricket Creek and Old Stone Wall and potentially the Weir with the guidance from the park's rec.
Second, uh, motion and a second, any further discussion?
Uh, two commissioners for the parks and rec, they all were very much in favor of this, but two expressed, uh, concerns with the number of signs we're gonna have down there with the, uh, you know, the most smoking signs of these, that we, you know, make sure that this doesn't become just like noise in the background, so...
I think those, those will be, these will be closer to the actual water.
Yeah, it's gonna be along, along the waterway.
And to address that issue, we may have to put up signs saying we got a lot of socks. I don't know, but anyway.
We need all signs.
I think it's a great idea and hopefully won't ever have to use them, but they will be there.
Yeah, like I've seen the last, uh, committee meeting, this is stemmed as a result of one eventual death that happened as a result of injury there, uh, so that, that's what our program is all about, is if we can potentially prevent this in the future, uh, that's, that's what we're here for.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Motion carried. That carried.
Your turn.
Mary Jean, you have anything else?
I'm aware of it.
Okay, Mr. O'Walt, more breakdown here at committee with the Main Street.
At our last committee meeting, it was, uh, we had some voted by our committee to leave Main Street strike as it is currently, and we need to bring that to vote tonight for our state council. I'll make a motion.
I have a motion on the table, on the table, there be no discussion, now here a second. Well, I have a motion and a second. Okay, all those in favor of that motion? Aye. Aye. That's all, uh, sorry.
Brian Herring?
No.
Mary Jean Krieger?
No.
Mitch Magnus?
No.
Johnny Savage?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
No.
Bill Boswell?
No.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
No.
Six to two. Motion, okay, that motion fails. Uh, I'll write it back to the table.
In light of the motion failure, I would like to move that we leave Main Street as it is.
Okay, I have a motion, now you're second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, open for discussion. There being no discussion and there being a split vote on the last one, I would ask the clerk to call roll, please.
Okay, Mary Jean Krieger?
Say leave it, yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
No.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
No.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to two. Six to two vote, motion passes. Okay. Okay, Mr. O'Walt, anything else? Okay, thank you. We'll move on. Dana Taylor?
We have an ordinance for the, uh, it's the dog and cat ordinance, but if the council would, please let me table this till next month. There's some more information I want to add to the ordinance that's not on there now, including persons and dogs being attacked instead of just dogs.
Are you making that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Aye.
A motion, table. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same?
Thank you.
That would be tabled.
That's all.
You've got to remember now, we're, well, we'll talk about that later, about meetings.
It won't take long.
Okay.
Trust me.
All right, we'll move on down, unless you have something else, Mrs. Gregor.
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move on down, the place on its second reading, the smoking ordinance, smoking in the park.
Simple motion.
Uh, yes, that's...
By title only.
Second, place on the second reading.
By title only.
Yes, you're getting good.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion to place it on a second reading by title only and a second, any discussion?
It's the shirts.
There being no discussion and his ordinance, I'll let the clerk call roll.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Motion passed.
An ordinance prohibiting smoking and the use of tobacco products, including electronic cigarettes in all city-owned or maintained city parks and sports facilities.
Second motion passed. It's up to your pleasure if you suspend the rules, uh, place it on its third reading, but that's all y'all's decision.
Suspend the rules and place it on its third and final reading.
Okay, I have a motion to suspend the rule and place it on its third and final reading by title only, oh? Mm-hmm. I'll move aside right now.
About title only, that's all it was, I'm sorry.
Now, I have a second also, any discussion? There being no discussion, I ask the clerk to call roll, please.
Johnny Savage?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance prohibiting smoking and the use of tobacco products, including electronic cigarettes in all city-owned or maintained city parks and sports facilities.
Third reading passed. We...
Motion to the...
So, move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt, any discussion on this? The clerk will please call roll.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second to adopt, any discussion on this? The clerk will please call roll.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance prohibiting smoking and the use of tobacco products, including electronic cigarettes in all city-owned or maintained city parks and sports facilities.
Third reading passed. We...
Motion to the...
So, move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt, any discussion on this? The clerk will please call roll.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second to adopt, any discussion on this? The clerk will please call roll.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
Yes.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Motion carried.
An ordinance prohibiting smoking and the use of tobacco products, including electronic cigarettes in all city-owned or maintained city parks and sports facilities.
Third reading passed. We...
Motion to the...
So, move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt, any discussion on this? The clerk will please call roll.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second to adopt, any discussion on this? The clerk will please call roll.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Johnny Savage?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second to adopt, any discussion on this? The clerk will please call roll.
Ryan Oswald?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on down, unless there's no other ordinances, right? And I think we're through with those. Okay, we're, we have discussion on next month's meeting.
Just to clarify, when you started, did you say you were wanting to have a committee meeting at that store or just move it straight to the...
Just move it straight to the council.
All right, then, I'll have to make a motion that we bypass the committee meeting for December and just have a city council meeting on December the 10th.
I'll second.
I have a motion to just have a council meeting on December the 10th, at what time please?
Six p.m.
Okay. Any discussion on this? There will be a business meeting on that day. Yes.
With the normal council meeting.
All right, no, no discussion?
You may, you second it, Dana, please.
I think we're pretty much discussed it. I think the committee at length.
Okay, and there being no further discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Okay, we will have a meeting on the 10th of next month. Okay, uh, we'll move on down here, maybe my comments, uh, first is I want to say thanksgiving to everybody, and I hope I can get a little closer to the table, probably by the way you get through, but, I hope everybody has it safe and happy. Thanks, dear. We do have some issues within the city, and though some of you are here tonight, maybe to discuss those issues, it before I'll turn it up to the council and to the citizens. We have been working, I wanna say dealing with the inlet the past month or so. There seem to be some things that they've not resolved or not taken care of within their contract, and, uh, Mr. Wade Phillips and Mr. Banjones have compiled a letter, and that letter is already sent to them. Uh, there is legal issues within this, so, uh, I'm saying it's being handled that way at this time. Hopefully, it'll be resolved without going further, but I will open it up to council, that's all I have to say about that situation, but, they have in front of them then, uh, that letter. Anybody who's more than welcome to see that letter, or to it in public, but y'all have it in front of me, that letter. Also, uh, it's a timeframe, there is a timeframe attached to it, but, then again, you're back in the legal issue there, so, I'll open it up on discussion if anybody in the council would like to discuss it at this time, or, uh, if you do not have anything, I will open it up to the citizens, if they won't say anything. Okay, that being said, I will open the meeting up to comments from the citizens, if anybody would like to, one, to say anything. If you don't, uh...
Oh, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Please, please stand up here, hon.
Okay, well, I'm bringing my example over.
You're not gonna put any of this in there, are you?
Yeah, I wanna tell you this, but, you know, it's, it's missing a wheel, which cannot be fixed because the wheel has been, uh, broken. President Charles has an organ, and I've had this problem, this is my husband, I've had this problem for two and a half months, and I have called and tried to get a new garbage can, and they don't have any available. Here, I've had it on the waiting list for two and a, and I have a very long driveway, and I can't pull this down when it's full, and that's, that problem. I'm wondering, what do they do if they have new customers? Do they not get any garbage can? Anyway, that's the problem. Um, I would just like to bring this to your attention, that all they say is there's not one available, so, anyway.
Well, another thing, you know, I'm Charles Orman, I normally carry the trash can up and down the hill, but I'm usually going on Tuesdays, so, that makes it, but I can bring it down...
Don't say anything, you're gonna get yourself in trouble with your life.
It's very weird what I have. But, uh, then I, I wondered if we're on a list for two and a half months, how many other people are on this list? I think it'd be well for y'all to, to just check in with, with the sanitation people and say, how many people are on a list? If somebody has been on it for two and a half months and can't get some, like she said, though, a new service, I assume that they can get a, a new, um, container, and also, I don't know, legally, are they supposed to service the people like us? I mean, it may be, we have a lot of no recourse, but, the bullet stops here with you guys, y'all are, make the contract with them, and I, I would like to think that y'all would sort of goose them or something and get them to, uh, to service their, their customers.
And I think that they're probably people that are worse off than I am that have problems getting a new garbage can.
Well, Shirley's seventy-five years old, and for her to pull this up that hill...
She's only twenty-two.
That'd be troubling. Well, that's all right. It is my child, but, I'm a lot older. But, anyway, we would certainly appreciate y'all's looking into this matter and see if there is something that can be done.
they ever see that. I think at some point, they need to.
Somewhat, I must say that. I think we need that ban and wait and going to inspection. I hate to get them in here, it really, if y'all want them, we can bring them. I really think we need to let that work through the needle. We're at that stage right now. We've passed the discussion period, believe it or not, I think. If you want them here, we can bring them.
I don't think we should bring them here if we've got an answer and a resolution. At that point, by December then, hey, to the council, we've answered here, but this is what we intend to do, correct the problem. So that we have, when we...
Well, you'll get it, you'll get an answer one way or another.
Whether it comes from nature, kind of, hang out, it's kind of polite, we'll get that answer.
That's your option, I think. Locally, they would probably...
We need, we have the right to help them, to come in. I think the last time they did come in and talked to us, they wanted to talk to us and resolve the problem, so let's, we'll get an opportunity, I'm hoping, to see what their plan is to cure this. If not, it'll probably come back to you as to whether you choose to declare default.
We're focused at that, though.
We're not, we're party days away from that stage.
To me, if I were them, though, I would want to appear at least for their own public relations issue. They've definitely got one, I think they need to address at some point, because they need to. Been going on for quite some time, we're just now, after committee being brought, more people have been contacted before that, this problem's been going on for months.
Months. And for me personally, I've never had a problem. Mine is picked up every morning at, you know, Monday morning, it's about seven thirty, seven forty, and it's never, never been an issue. For the schools, it's a safety issue, and it's an operational issue. They have trash, literally in huge dumpsters inside the school. When the dumpsters are, are emptied inland, they immediately fill back up within fifteen or twenty minutes, but the, the stage refuses in the, in the school system. So they have to come back, you know, three, four times a week. Now, they, one of the locations, some of them are Wednesdays and some are Monday, Wednesday, Fridays, the schedules are different, but there was one location that went seven days to fill up.
I was supposed to have two trash, two cartboards, and I had Wednesday off, Wednesday's only day they don't come to me, or as opposed to. But I would never dance ever.
They've never complied with the schedule, have they? I know that there's two locations at the school that never complied.
Well, it's not just with the commercial, it's also some residential. There's been issues, not just with the, the containers, but with the pickup schedule.
But as I expressed to the mayor, I think that the school, the hospital should be priorities for inland or any vendor within the community.
Y'all, that's, you're right, but we're, we have to take steps.
Well, and I appreciate what you and Van and Wade have done, I, you know, definitely appreciate it.
Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion for a German.
So look.
I have a motion, all in favor by?
Aye.
All opposed, same?